Hi, Tony. Richard Long, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance again? Thank you. Is there anyone here attending their first town meeting or town-school district meeting tonight? Please rise to be recognized. Thank you, and thank you for your interest in coming tonight. I'm Mike Norath. I'm the moderator who was elected last year to serve for this year. We have a tradition in Manchester of having spirited, some would say, long-winded debates and a free exchange of ideas at our town meetings. At the town meeting on Saturday, I mentioned that it was the 250th annual town meeting held in Manchester. Tonight, I note that under Act 46, this could be one of the last town-school district meetings in Manchester. This type of annual exercise of direct democracy for our town-school district is an endangered species. As moderator, it's my duty to maintain order while guiding us through the agenda which the school board has set before us tonight. So before we start the school district meeting, let's briefly review the procedures primarily for the benefit of those of you who were not here Saturday. Our meeting tonight is governed by Robert's Rules of Order, or by Vermont law if there's a Vermont statute that covers the topic. With a motion and a two-thirds vote, we can suspend any of Robert's rules, but we cannot suspend Vermont law. Among other things, that means we cannot take binding action tonight on any issue not contained in the warning, which you'll find on page eight of Part A of the Town Report, which should have been mailed to you. You must be recognized by the moderator to make a motion or speak in debate. Before we can debate an article, we first need a motion and a second to that motion. According to Robert's Rules, each voter is allowed 10 minutes to debate each question before us. I will not recognize you a second time on the same question until everyone has had an opportunity to speak a first time on that question. You will need a suspension of the rules to speak a third time on the same question. If you choose to ask a question during your time for debate, the time answering your question counts against your 10 minutes, not the time of the person giving the answer. All questions need to be addressed to the moderator. I will ensure that your question is answered. If you're not satisfied that I've done so, let me know. There should be no back-and-forth between you and the school board, the superintendent, or any other person. The microphones face the moderator for a reason. You may use the microphone at the rear if you prefer to see the audience while speaking in debate. We can amend any main motion and amend that amendment once. Then we must vote. Debate is limited to the question before us at any time. We vote first on the amendment, and debate and vote on subsequent amendments, and finally the article as amended. If you become confused at any point as to where we are, ask, and I'll attempt to clarify. Undoubtedly, the most important rule in Robert's is to respect every speaker's opinion and give them your attention when they speak. It's therefore inappropriate to cheer, clap, or question the motives of another member in your speech. If someone has already made your point, please consider if it's necessary to repeat it. If you're not a Manchester voter, please stay in the bleachers. If you are a Manchester voter, you need to be seated in the chairs on the floor here in order to have your vote counted. Normally, we'll vote by voice vote. If I'm unclear as the result of a voice vote, I'll call for a division or standing vote, which will be counted by the justices at the peace. If I hear any negative votes, I'll declare that the ayes or nays, as the case may be, appear to have it. This is your cue to request a division if you're unhappy with my preliminary call. Any one voter can request a division or standing vote. You do not need to be recognized by me to request a division, but please stand and shout out "division" so I'm sure to hear you. Likewise, seven voters can request a paper ballot on any question, even after the results of the standing vote have been announced, but before the next article has been moved and seconded and announced by me. While we'll attempt to expedite any paper ballot vote, please be aware that it does take extra time, and you may lose some of your supporters as a result of the delay. At any time, if you're unsure of what procedure to follow or what question we're voting on, please ask me to explain, as you're probably not alone in your confusion. Only registered voters in Manchester are allowed to speak or vote at town meeting or town-school district meeting unless granted permission by two-thirds of the voters present. So to get on to the warning, the legal voters of the Manchester Town School District, Manchester, Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Manchester Elementary Middle School on Monday, February 29, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. to transact any business, not including voting by Australian ballot, and on Tuesday, March 1, 2016, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Manchester Town Offices to transact business involving voting by Australian ballot. Article 1, shall the voters approve payment of the announced tuition rate of Burn Burton Academy in the amount of $16,250 for the 2016-2017 school year for those pupils who are residents of the town of Manchester and who attend Burn Burton Academy. Is there a motion on Article 1, Orland Campbell? Second, Bill Drunzig?
Mr. Moderator, I wanted to have a point of order here that substantial information has been being passed out tonight, which is not general knowledge to the public, I believe, because it's just been generated in the last few days or so. And I think it would have substantial impact on discussion of any of these articles. If we could have a quick overview and the differences between what's handed out here and what's handed out in our Town Report is appropriate.
Just...
It's on the back desk. That's another issue. I don't know that everybody has it.
Okay. Let me first explain what my rule is. State law says there's to be no electioneering in the polling place.
But this is modified information on what's in the Town Report.
I understand what you're saying. Let me explain my position first. I've taken the position in the past and again this year that you can't campaign within the polling place. You can't have a poster that says, you know, "Vote No" on Article 18 or whatever. But that if you have information that you want to impart, you may put it on the tables in the rear. It seems to me that what you're telling me about is within that guideline. If whoever produced it, does the paper indicate who produced it?
I haven't had time to look at it in detail, but fiscal year 17 budget review, I would presume it either came directly from the school board or the superintendent's office.
Well, at any rate...
And the superintendent is shaking his head yes.
We are not voting the budget tonight. We're only discussing it.
But it may affect other decisions that are on the ballot.
Okay. Here's the thing. It's about the budget. We're going to discuss the budget. Whoever produced it, I'm sure, will stand up to explain it, why it differs from what was presented at the time the Town Report went to press. And I would rule that your point of order is not well-taken.
I disagree with you, Mr. Chairman, but I guess you ruled the roost here, so I'll sit down. Thank you.
We will have a chance to discuss the budget as long as anyone cares to stay here tonight, so... We are on Article 1. It's been moved and seconded. I believe Mr. Tastian wants to address Article 1.
Who puts these microphones so high? That's what I'm saying. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. My name's Mark Tastian. I'm the headmaster at Burn Burton Academy. As you've seen from the warning, we've set tuition for the 2016-2017 school year at That's an increase of 1.88% from this current school year. To put that in perspective, our teacher contract calls for a 2.8% salary increase, and benefits throughout the school are going up about 8%. I can tell you, what keeps me up at night is that those numbers simply don't add up. However, we wanted to do two things in setting this number. First and foremost, we recognize that Act 46 and the allowable growth rates throughout the states are putting significant pressure on all of our sending schools, including MEMs here tonight, and we wanted to minimize our impact on the overall budget. The second thing we wanted to do was make sure that we continue to be the school and be a school that is a point of pride for this community. Burn Burton was founded in 1829, and long before I arrived, the school had developed a reputation for providing outstanding facilities and, most of all, for having teachers that cared deeply about students. We care deeply about our teachers, and our teachers ask a lot of themselves. In order for us to be healthy, we need to figure out how to balance our budget, and a piece of it is this 1.88% increase. We're counting on a lot of hopes that'll happen between now and the start of next school year. I hope that our enrollment increases. I'm not sure that it will, and I have grave concern that it won't, but we're working hard to be as attractive a school as possible so people keep wanting to move into our sending towns and send their kids to Burn Burton Academy. I hope that our international population grows, and right now it is at about 60 students, and we're looking to increase by somewhere between three and five international students. Our international students are full-pay students. They pay a boarding school tuition of about $45,000, so each student can make a significant financial difference while also, I think, most importantly, adding to the educational diversity of our community. I hope that we raise more money. Burn Burton has been very successful at fundraising, both for operating expenses and also raising money for capital expenditures. It's private funding that funded our turf field. It's private funding that funded the mountain campus, and it's a million dollars a year in annual fund that helps fuel our operating expenses. I hope that continues to grow. All of these things make me nervous, but we work very hard to make it all happen and to keep it all hanging together. Most of all, I believe deeply that our greatest strength as a school is the quality of educational experience that we provide, the educational experience encompassed in our academic programs, in our athletic programs, and in our arts programs. We need to be a full-service school. We need to be able to serve every kid in our community, regardless of their socioeconomic circumstances, regardless of their learning style, regardless of their personality, regardless of their interests. And I think, I believe we do that very well. I believe we do it very well, very much because we are so connected to all of you as community members. So we do our best to be the school that this community deserves, and I will end by saying thank you very much for being a community that provides such tremendous support to Burn Burton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tastian. So, Bill Drunzig?
Thank you. I would like to just ask one question in reference to salaries. Now, what is the beginning salary of a new teacher out of college coming to Burn Burton to work?
So, our starting salary is somewhere right around... A starting salary for someone with a BA and not a master's degree would be somewhere around $40,000.
Now, this is my next question. When you say salary increases...
Please address your questions.
Excuse me. Yes, excuse me.
Yeah, it's tough.
I didn't mean to be offensive.
You're not offensive. I know it's unnatural, but...
Well, anyway, I look at you, Michael, and I can't think of my question. Anyway...
Maybe that's another reason for the rule.
So, this is my question. The increase this year over last year of salaries, you said, is 1.88%?
No, I think he said the tuition increase was 1.8, but that the teacher's salary increase was more like 2.8%.
2.8%.
2.8%. Now, that's each teacher. Now, is that based on the base pay, or is that based on the salary of the preceding year that...
Okay, so the question is, is the 2.8% an increase in the base pay, or is it an increase in the actual compensation to all your teachers?
It is an increase in the actual compensation for our teachers.
Oh.
So wherever their salary is, they will have 2.8% more.
Oh, oh my goodness. What a mathematical error. It should be, I think, in fairness to everybody, and also to the taxpayers, it should be based on the base pay. This way, everybody would get an equal increment.
Right.
The other way, those who are on the higher scale are going to do so much better, and I'm sure they're the ones that need it.
No, I think maybe you're misinterpreting. What he's saying is the overall... And tell me if I'm wrong.
Well, actually, I...
Go ahead.
If I may, I believe you are interpreting it correctly. So somebody making $60,000 would get 2.8% of $60,000, and someone making $40,000 will get 2.8 of $40,000.
I think that's a negotiable point.
That's a very good point.
What I'm sure of is that we cannot negotiate the teacher's contract here.
Well, no, 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 absolutely not.
Right.
But I want to make my point.
It's a good negotiating point for the administration to take into the next negotiating session. Mr. Drunzig?
I think, as Mr. Tastian knows, I've been a great supporter of Burn Burton over the years. However, our school board chairman has voted to, has campaigned, that the voters vote down our school budget as was presented in the school report. I would like to ask, and the problem with that is, if the budget is voted down and we approve this tuition, there is only one place to cut, and that's in the MEMs budget. And that is hugely unfair to me, particularly when the MEMs budget is lower, the special education budget is up, and the secondary education budget is up. But, and the reason I asked for the discussion earlier, the new numbers may change the school board chairman's mind. I don't know. The problem is, the damage is already done because his letter was published in the paper, and this information is just showing up tonight, and how that's going to get out to the voters between now and voting time, I don't know. But I would like you to ask the chairman for me, does he support the budget with the new numbers?
That is not germane to this question.
It is, because I think it's germane to whether or not you approve the tuition.
Well, my ruling is that it is not germane to the question. If you want to talk about that as a reason not to support the tuition, you're free to do that, but otherwise, we open everything up to discussion under an article that's limited only to what Burn Burton tuition should be for the coming year.
Well, I think that's a little bit unfair for people to make the judgment, because if we have to make the judgment on erroneous information, how does that make sense?
I'm not arguing whether it makes sense to decide something on erroneous information. I don't know that the information is erroneous.
Well, I think you should.
I'm sure, excuse me, I'm sure the chair has heard your request, and if he feels it important, he will address it in his discussion of this article if he feels it affects the change in the tuition. But I can't get into questions with other people over something that does not directly involve the tuition for Burn Burton.
Well, then I regretfully have to encourage everybody here that we do not approve the tuition until we know the status of our budget, because if the budget goes down and cuts have to be made, unless, of course, it gets back that people realize that it was made on erroneous information and the same budget is resubmitted, all the pain has to come from MEMs. And the school board has already decimated the MEMs budget as much as they could possibly stomach, I should say, and any further cuts, I think, will be devastating to MEMs.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address Article 1?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. French?
Just make the point, the flyer that was handed out is not new information. It's a summary information. It's what we do every year at this meeting. It just presents highlights, a little easier to digest for voters, but it's not new information relative to the numbers in the budget. It's the exact same budget. Just provides some information on the different aspects of the budget that have changed, as well as the tax implications. So that's, I just want to address that issue. The flyer is not new information in terms of what the budget's before you in the annual report.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who hasn't spoken on Article 1 who would like to? Mr. Powers?
In disclosure, I'm a trustee of Burn Burton and a graduate, a lifelong resident of Manchester. But the thing that occurs to me about Bill's comment that we should vote this down, Mr. Tastian outlined that the 1.8% that we've requested, in reality, has behind it a 2.8% salary increase and an 8% benefits increase. So Burn Burton has done its duty, if you will prefer to call it that. We would be much more comfortable getting around 3.1% or whatever that is to cover our known additional expenses that are going to occur this year, and we're willing, in transparency, to take the risk that we will increase students at Burn Burton, which will increase tuition, we'll get more foreign students perhaps, maybe our annual fund will increase, and we'll make up the difference. But frankly, Burn Burton has taken the pain, and I don't want you to think that we only want MEMs to take the pain. We've already, Burn Burton, rather, has already adjusted their budget way down from what they really realistically need to support that year that's coming up. So I just wanted to clarify that. We're all in this together. I think that was forced on us, perhaps, by the state with Act 46. Maybe it's a good thing. Maybe it wakes us all up, and maybe we'll all learn how to deal with it. That's going to roll out in the next year, but believe me, in my opinion, Burn Burton has done its job.
Thank you. Jeff Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think Mr. Drunzig does bring up a good point about the two being more or less intertwined to some degree, so there is some merit, I think, in his concerns. However, from reviewing the data and the information I see in the handout, I've got to give credit to both the school board, the administration, and Burn Burton for holding costs down in a difficult year. And I certainly would concur with what the Manchester Journal has said, that, you know, you're more or less stuck between a rock and a hard place. But I would like to know, on this particular issue associated with the tuition, if indeed the school board is supportive of this tuition number and if they do endorse it. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the school board who would like to address that question?
Brian Vogel. I'm chairman of the school board, and through all our discussions, we've been very supportive of BBA. We drafted a letter when Act 46 originally came our way, and there were growth caps imposed that would impose a penalty on us if our spending exceeded those caps. We drafted the letter and sent it to BBA, letting them know or reminding them that we were facing budgetary pressures this year, and I think they did an admirable job, coming back with something very, very reasonable. We appreciated it, and we're very supportive.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Cassidy.
Joe, I'm sorry.
Just clarification. Mr. French said that the handout doesn't contradict what a Town Report does or the School Report. And maybe I'm looking at the wrong numbers, but I see on the handout an actual tax rate of $1.538, and I'm thinking on the School Report on page 45, I think the comparable number is $1.5752. Can somebody help me understand that?
Okay, is there someone from the school board who could address that on the projected tax rate?
What page were you referring to?
Forty-five, I think.
Yeah, forty-five, line 33.
Yes, let me just check something.
Could one of the ballot clerks or the people checking in there who I happen to be related to bring me a copy of the handout that we're talking about?
Yes, I'm going to stand corrected. There is a variable that is still not set by the legislature, what's now called the proper yield value. Every year, this is on line 29 in the bracket, you'll see 16,347.36 divided by 9955. That number, the 9955, is now ultimately finalized by the legislature in May. In the handout, we, at the time we published that, we used the most current information from the legislature. That number keeps dropping every time the legislature deliberates on the current level of ed spending in the state. So the number in the handout reflects the most current information from the legislature. But that final number, as it is every year, won't be finalized usually until Saturday evening in May by the legislature.
So the actual rate could go up or down from this number?
Yeah, I think in the case, in what's in the page forty-five, that was a worst-case scenario. So, but the number on the handout is on the lower end, so it's probably going to be somewhere in between there. But it is, on an annual basis, we never quite know what the rate is, we give it our best shot. The handout represents our most current information, but there's actually even a lower number banding about right now in the legislature, but we really won't know until May.
So as I see it, it could be from a 4.6 to a 7.2% increase in taxes.
Yeah, the tax rate's going to go up somewhere to six to eight cents, somewhere in that
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on Article One who would like to, Austin Kilburn?
Austin Kilburn, just a question about the penalty that we will probably have to pay to Mount Pilgrim for the budget. Is that only related to the elementary school budget? Does that also comprise the Burn Burton budget? Or is it irrelevant what the Burn Burton budget is?
It's related to the total education expense.
Okay, thank you.
Per pupil. Anyone else on Article One who has not spoken? Bill Drunzick.
Just a slight rebuttal to my friend Mike Powers, but if you look at the Burn Burton Academy budget on page nineteen of Report B, and maybe many people don't have that, but they include depreciation in their P&amp;L statement, so to speak, or income and operating expense statement, which is a non-cash flow item. And because they include that in, it looks like they have a big deficit in the bottom. But when you subtract that out, and I'm a little bit surprised the school board didn't pick up on this, that projected for this year, and they audited financials last year, and projected for next year, they show six-figure surpluses every year. That's right on their report.
The page, Bill, in Part B?
Nineteen and Part B.
Part B, thank you. Okay. Are you ready for the question on Article One, which is?
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sue Flanagan. I have a question for Mark that I under, I mean, I am fully in support of voting the tuition rate tonight and supporting that. I guess I just have a question that I don't feel that it's ever been in my lifetime here in Manchester, that we've been in this situation of a possible voting down of the school budget. And I guess if that was to happen, my question to Mark is, is there some way to come back to the table and to, I understand that they've done a great job, and so has Manchester, to cut. Is there any way to come back to the table and be a part of that problem or solution, I guess?
Mr. Taschen, sorry.
So, the challenge that's put forth is that, right now, the mountain towns red has already approved our tuition. Dorset is having their town meeting tonight, as is Sunderland and Danby. Tomorrow is Wind Hall, Stratton, Dover, and so ultimately by, I don't know, two o'clock tomorrow, if all goes as I hope it goes, got a lot of hopes here, but if all goes as I hope, we will be approved in all those towns. So I guess it's uncharted territory to say what would happen if we approved Burn Burton's tuition and then the townspeople vote down the MEMS tuition. It would obviously put us in a very difficult position. I don't know, I don't know what we would do because it hasn't happened, but I have a hard time seeing how I go to the other sending towns that have approved our tuition and do something different. I don't see how we do something different for MEMS. You know, I understand the predicament, and Bill, you've been a tremendous supporter of the school, and I'm not taking his recommendation to be lack of support, but rather, I think, appropriate concern for the overall welfare of our school system from kindergarten through 12th grade. I will say I share that concern, that's what got us to the 1.8% increase, and I share it beyond that as well, and would want to figure out some way to be supportive. But I really can't make any promises other than the commitment that we all are committed to young people from kindergarten right on through and beyond their graduation from Burn Burton. I don't know if that's satisfying, but I'm just trying to lay it out there for everyone.
If there are no other speakers, the question on Article One is, shall the voters approve payment of the announced tuition rate of Burn Burton Academy in the amount of $16,250 for the 2016-2017 school year for those pupils who are residents of the town of Manchester and who attend Burn Burton Academy? All those in favor of Article One, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and Article One has been approved. Article Two, shall the voters authorize the school board, oh, and let me say, Mr. Taschen had told me ahead of time, he needs to leave to go to the Dorset meeting, where they'll be discussing the same article. So, Mark, thank you, and if anyone has any other questions, they can reach him at the school tomorrow.
Thank you.
Comment? Can I comment?
No, not till other business. Shall the voters authorize the school board to borrow money by issuance of notes not in excess of the anticipated revenues for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017? Is there a motion on Article Two? Moved by Orland Campbell, seconded by Sylvia Jalavet. Someone like to address Article Two? If not, the question is, shall the voters authorize the school board to borrow money by issuance of notes not in excess of the anticipated revenue for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and Article Two has been approved. Article Three, to discuss the budget to be voted upon by Australian ballot, which is Article Five, the Australian ballot being on Tuesday. Is there anyone who would like to discuss the budget? Sylvia.
I have this question. It's in reference to the Burn Burton approved amount. I don't see if the Manch, if this item that's going to be voted by Australian ballot is defeated, I don't see why that would affect the vote that we had just a few minutes ago on the tuition of Burn Burton.
I, you asking me, or?
Well, whoever can answer the question. I don't think it should.
I'll give you my answer.
Please.
Which is, they are interrelated. Our public school educates children pre-K through eight, and we pay tuition for students who choose to attend whatever high school they want to, in most cases, it's Burn Burton. The system that is set up in the state is that the schools have to announce their tuition ahead of time and get it approved by the voters, otherwise, the town pays the average union high school tuition. So this is, this is a dilemma that was created a few years ago when the legislature required this approval each year. The total amount of the school budget includes the projected number of students at the announced tuition rate. That number, some years, turns out to be too low, some years it turns out to be too The school board has only control over the pre-K through eight budget. So as Mr. Drunzick said, if the budget gets turned down, and if the final budget that is approved is a lesser amount, then those reductions will have to come out of the elementary school budget, or the special ed budget, or the BRSU budget, but they will not come out of the secondary budget because the voters have already approved a tuition.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
But it may be that the actual number of students who attend Burn Burton will be fewer than our projected.
Well, then, the adjustment will be made, but still, the amount of tuition is going to be the same.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, as long as we're on the same page, that's the way I read it, too. Okay, thank you.
That's right. Yes, Mrs. Dupont.
I guess I'm just confused, and I would like to ask Brian to explain this again. Is this the budget that's been asked to be taken down by MEMS and to be looked at again? If the budget goes through the way it goes through now, there's a penalty to be paid, and that penalty, I don't know if the sum is right, I have $147,000, somewhere's in that vicinity, and that's just going to be paid to Mount Pilgrim. That doesn't go to Manchester, it doesn't go to any of the students here. So to my way of thinking, having run a business, that's bad business, and I never want to pay a penalty if I can use it in the house, in the home, in the school. So if I've misunderstood this, could somebody please explain it better?
Mr. French.
As you know, you've heard about Act 46 and the penalty aspect of Act 46, and Manchester's a school district that's going to get caught in that penalty pretty much regardless of what the school board does, and we, I think there's been consensus on that point through our deliberations. But I will point out, the sheet has a little summary on it, the excess penalty amount is $244, not $140 some odd thousand. It's on line i. Yeah, that's, but that's the total amount as generated by.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the microphone was set up for you before.
Sorry. The penalty amount is $244, it's on line i of the handout. So under Act 46, that's the amount per pupil that's being added into the ed spending per pupil based on the penalty, it's $244.
Per pupil?
That's education spending per equalized pupil, $244 added into the total spending. That's the result of the penalty from Act 46.
So what would that, line L?
Line L, I'm sorry, should have left my glasses. Line L. You can see, if you, those of you who have the handout, I'll just walk through that for a minute. Line H, the ed spending per equalized pupil, less exclusion, so when we do the calculation, exclusions, there are certain aspects of our costs that are excluded from the penalty calculation, including debt service on the bond. That $15,409 is then compared to that number I referred to earlier, the property yield value, and, or, excuse me, a penalty, and we're over the penalty by $244. So that amount of $244 gets added into the ed spending on line H, and that makes our total ed spending per equalized pupil $15,827. So it's the normal amount on line H plus the $244. So that's the result of the penalty aspect.
But I think Mrs. Dupont's question had to go with what the, she was quoting a total for that number times the number of pupils. Can you tell us what the 174 times the number of pupils comes to?
Yeah, mathematically, it doesn't work that way, though. So, you know, basically, the proportion is set up between this property yield value, which is line N. So if our ed spending was exactly equal to that 9870 that you see, our tax rate would be a dollar. So for every percentage point, our ed spending per equalized pupil goes over that amount, our tax rate goes up. So if our spending was 10% more than 9870, our tax rate would be $1.10. So what we do is we add the 244 into our predicted spending, and that increases the ratio, but it doesn't work out on a per pupil basis the way you're thinking it does. It's complex.
How much total penalty, with the latest numbers you have, how much total penalty would you expect Manchester to pay in the coming year?
The way to translate that is into a tax rate. That's the only way you can talk about it, is how much of the tax increase is a result of the penalty.
How do you calculate that?
By knowing the grand lust for the town?
Yeah, well, statewide, you know, we can look at what if the tax rate, what if the spending was the line, the amount on line H before the penalty, the interaction with the penalty, we can do a calculation on that and determine the tax rate, we can add the penalty in and then determine what that tax rate is. The difference between those two numbers tells us how much of the spending is a result of the tax rate, or the penalty, excuse me. And then somewhere, when we originally did our deliberations, the penalty, the result of the penalty was going to be seven cents of the increase. That has now dropped to closer to four cents. So we're looking at somewhere between a six to nine cent tax increase, depending on what the legislature does, four cents of that increase is a result of the penalty.
Thank you. Carol, you have further questions? You still have the floor.
I would just like to know why you couldn't come in within budget. If you're going to take a penalty, and it's a very confusing mathematical equation to find out actually how much we're going to pay, to me, that's just not good business.
Well, it's, I wouldn't say business, we don't earn a profit, so in that regard, it's not a business, but we did. We looked at, from the very beginning of our process, whether we could avoid the penalty at all. There's a couple things that were running against the district this year before we even started our budget deliberations. The number we're talking about that really gets to the heart of the penalty is education spending. Education spending is not just the budget, it's the budget minus local revenues. The difference between that, plus what comes from Mount Pilgrim, makes the whole thing work. When we started our budget this year, one of the first things we had to contend with was last year, we used the surplus of $224,000. This year, well, we used that to lower taxes, last year, probably good business last year. Now, we don't have that money this year, so immediately, we start with $224,000 less of local revenue. That means that's $224,000 initially that has to come from Mount Pilgrim, your property taxes, to make this thing work. Another big part of this was that we had a slight deficit this year, $54,000, which is rather minor considering an $11 million budget. But we also, last year, due to the frugality the board exercised, we normally would put 10 extra secondary students into the budget, because on an annual basis, Manchester usually gets 10 extra kids. We don't know where they come from, so we usually put 10 extra secondary kids in the budget. Last year, we just couldn't afford to do that, or else your taxes would have gone up. So last year, we put zero extra secondary students into the budget. Guess what? We had about 13 of them come in, so that also contributes to our new cost. So before we even sat down and looked at the school district budget or the school program at MEMS, we had to make up the difference of the lost revenue in the form of a surplus from last year, $224,000, and we had to contend with 13 unanticipated secondary students. So that's the beginning of it. And then we went through several iterations of the budget, ultimately, difficult decisions you read about with the board, but approximately $350,000 were cut, including several positions. And that's approximately what we cut last year. We had, you know, I will speak to this, in my perception, we had a pretty strong turnout at school board meetings. Some of the cuts that I was asked to prepare were not met with that much enthusiasm, shall we say. And, you know, I think the board did a nice job of navigating, navigating, being cost-conscious, but at the same time, as Mr. Taschen spoke to, you have to be cautious about cutting into the quality of your programs, because it becomes a downward spiral. If you start eliminating programs, you can't attract students, and you end up cutting more costs and so forth. But anyway, to answer your question, you know, that was the context in which we made the decisions, and there were cuts made, but I think pretty much from the very beginning of this process under Act 46, we realized that this was going to be of this process under Act 46, we realized that this was going to be a year where we were going to be in the penalty to some extent.
I find myself in the same position I was in last year. We're talking an awful lot about money, and we're talking an awful lot about a financial situation that's created in Montpelier, not locally. And it used to be that you could always control your own town's budget because you controlled it absolutely. Now, we have a mix, and as you heard from the explanation we just got, nobody really understands it, at least not sitting over here. Montpelier has fixed it that way. But I haven't heard anybody talk about the quality of education that we offer, or the importance of that education to our kids. All my kids are gone. They're old. But everybody's kid in this town is mine. And I think that you can get a little bit carried away with money. The school board has had to bite a very hard bullet and cut programs and do things they don't want to do in order to provide a program that will still attract people here. If you think your properties are valuable, if you think that your money is well-invested, the reason people still move to this town is because of Burn Burton and because of the schools. That's why families come here. It's not the advertising we voted the other night. It's because of the quality of education we have. I would like to hear something from our headmaster or someone about what is going on at the school, what's going on from the kids. I don't mind paying a penalty, because I know it's not created by this board. It's created in Montpelier by a bunch of people who are trying to balance budgets and trying to run schools that they don't understand. But I would mind if we decimate our school and decimate what we offer to our children. So I think there's a balance there, and I would like to hear something about what's going on at MAMS and how this budget will affect the kids here. So if somebody would address that, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Tom Quinn, I'm the principal, and I don't think I could put it any better than what you have just said. Our program is about our kids. Education is expensive, there's no question about it, but the kind of education that our kids, our children receive on a daily basis comes from very, very dedicated teachers. They don't pay attention to how much it costs to make the school run. They care about how well they teach their children. We start with a pre-K program, with two very, very dedicated educators, working very hard with fifteen, sixteen kids in their classrooms. Our kindergarten program starts children on the road to reading, and that formal reading education starts with first grade. By the time the kids get to first grade, students who have been in our school for two years are very well-prepared for what we're about to do. We notice the difference between the children who come to us at first grade from other places versus our students who are here. Those students know how school runs. They are a very intricate part of our school. Schools should be a place for children to learn, but it also needs to be a place where children form relationships with each other and with their teachers. Every one of our teachers is dedicated to what they do in their classrooms. We just had an injury to one of our first-grade teachers, he tore his Achilles tendon. It's cut a really deep hole in our first-grade program, and we have to put in, we are looking to get somebody in that program to make that program as viable as it currently is. Those children miss their teacher. They miss them because of the relationship he forms with each one of his children, and that's a process that goes on from preschool through eighth grade. We have a program, you want to talk about how well we do educationally? We have a standardized test that we give three times a year, and each one of our classes shows growth toward specific learning goals. That happens because our teachers make it happen. Those goals are satisfied because our teachers are there every day for them. I'm here five months, and I've not seen a dedicated staff like this in any school that I have been, and I've been in a few places. I can't tell you how much of an honor it is for me to be here and to be working with this staff. Thank you.
Thank you. In the rear.
I have a couple of questions. One is about, you know, the amount of money that will go to Montpelier, because, while I know that you tried to explain it, is there a way that you could explain it in terms of, it could be as low as this or as high as this, depending on the different factors in the budget? Because you lost me, and I'm just trying to get some kind of concrete understanding. And in terms of, you know, what's going on at the school and the quality of education, you know, my family moved here a couple of years ago, and we did that because we had heard, well, we did that because we got the opportunity, and we moved specifically to Manchester because we'd heard about how great Burn Burton is, and we had heard a lot of good things about MEMS. And, you know, we really consciously decided to move to Manchester because of what we heard about the education opportunities in this town. And the teachers that we have had since we've been here have been exceptional, and I have to say, you know, every, I'm around the school a lot, I volunteer in the school, the teachers here are so wonderful, and yet, we're really, I see, and, you know, one of my sons is in first grade right now, and I see that we're really struggling because, because the children don't have, the children who don't have the support at home to create a learning environment for them are overwhelming the ones that do, I guess is the best way I can put it, are overwhelming the classroom, are overwhelming the teachers, and I think are making it very difficult for the teachers to teach. And so, you know, we as parents are trying to recommend options for the classroom. You know, the gentleman who got up and spoke and asked, you know, what's going on in the schools, I think that the educators are working so hard to serve our students, but I question whether we should be, I question whether we should be voting for or against the budget in terms of what will create a change faster that will serve all of the communities connected to this area better. You know, people have said to me, oh, well, you know, there's a possibility of merging schools and combining classes from, you know, different towns that are within the BRSU. If we vote down the budget, does that mean that that might happen faster? Would that have an effect on it? I'm, I don't know what the answer is. I'm looking for guidance in terms of what, how to get my child the best education, believing in the public school system, that I can get for him, and the soonest that I can get it. Because I don't want to wait until he's in fourth grade for a positive change to happen. So that's my question.
Your name, please, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. I'm Suzanne Moore.
Suzanne Moore.
Thank you.
Mr. French.
You had some great points. I don't know if I can connect your concerns with the quality of education, which are greatly appreciated. I mean, we rely on parents to, as equal partners in our process, but I'll try to explain the tax rate a little more clearly first. Part of the challenge has been, you know, the legislature's been working on this, and particularly, the cap aspect was adjusted the last day in January, I believe. So they, the legislature was working through this process. So we had materials, as we were working through the board budget development process, that pointed to a tax rate being substantially higher than what ultimately we think it's going to be, but it'll be somewhere in the best-case scenario, around a dollar fifty-three. In the worst-case scenario, somewhere around a dollar fifty-nine. That variation right now is dependent on the number of what's called a property yield value that the legislature will not finalize until May sometime. Okay? So the tax rate is going to be an increase, somewhere between maybe a six and a nine-cent increase, depending on how things play out. This issue of the cap, if you think about that being six to nine cents, somewhere in there, about four cents of that is due to the penalty aspect of this. So if we didn't have the penalty under Act 46, you know, the tax rate would be going up two cents to five cents, somewhere in that range. But the tax rate would be going up regardless of Act 46, just because of the decline in equalized pupils, but we're not sure where it's going to fall, as we never are at this time of year. We try to do our best to tell you what the tax implications of the budget will be, but the legislature's always had some mechanism that they don't approve until May that ultimately factors in, you know, what the tax rate will be. But it'll be somewhere between a dollar fifty-three and a dollar fifty-nine. I think it's fair to say about four cents of that is a result of the penalty of Act 46. Okay?
Thank you.
It's fairly complex. And in terms of, Mr. Quinn wants to talk further on the quality piece, I think, you know, the connection to governance in Act 46 is an open question, is one I'd encourage you to stay involved in. You know, what's being contemplated under Act 46 is a merger of school districts, not a merger of schools, per se, but certainly, I think, you know, one of the, I don't want to be in a position of defending Act 68 or defending acts of the legislature, but from the state's perspective, as you know, Vermont spends more per pupil than any other state in the country. And so we do have a spending problem in the state, and it has been determined that that's a direct result of our governance structure. So we have an opportunity, a window of opportunity, to figure that out. The board's deeply engaged in that in a number of different levels, and I think it's really, it's a critical piece for all taxpayers and all community members to be engaged and monitor, because we're at a sort of a nexus, I think, where, you know, the population of Vermont continues to decline, we have a large number of schools, a large number of school districts, and we're at that point, and I think in our history, where there's going to be an adjustment. And I think it behooves all of us to become very involved in that, so that the adjustment is what's best for Manchester, and not just best for the region or best for the state. So it's an important time to become involved in these conversations.
Thank you.
Bill, you spoke once on this?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, right. Go ahead. Sorry.
Well, my name is Jamie Kunish, and I have two questions. One, with the budget at MEMS, has MEMS ever frozen the salaries of their staff to save money?
I've been here nine years, and I don't believe we've had a salary freeze.
Is that something that can happen?
The teachers are negotiated agreement, so that's not going to happen unless the teachers agree to do that, and other staff, we just are in the process of instituting the first-ever union agreement with them, so I would say it would be challenging with them, they would have to agree as well, have to go through a collective bargaining process.
Thank you. And then my second thing that I would like to bring up is just for anybody here who doesn't have children in Manchester. I have three, one in kindergarten, one in first grade, and one smaller, and I grew up in this town, went to MEMS myself, and the school is really hurting right now, I have to say. I have, first grade is a, it's a disaster. The school, if the school loses any more money and can't keep the things that they have right now, there are many, many a parents and families in this town that are going to pull their children from the school because they can't provide what's needed. The school used to be a great place where you'd want, you would feel, if you had a child and you were in a surrounding town here, you'd want your kid to go to MEMS. Right now, it's, I'm a little sometimes embarrassed to say that my kids go to MEMS. There's no school spirit here. There, the school needs something to get people to come into the school now. There is, there's just, it's missing something, and without any money to help the school, it's not going to get it. And I feel, and also, if these children do not come to the school, does the school then lose more money? If we lose, the more pupils that you lose, the worse it is, correct?
Right. Yeah, I mean, part of the function of the tax rate calculation, the denominator's the number of pupils, so it's certainly, one of the challenges, this building can hold many more pupils, and the number of pupils continues to decline K through 12. So, yes, I mean, there's an argument there that says the more pupils we lose, the more, we'd have to scale programs back even further.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Moderator, could I have a follow-on comment to Dan's answer to the last question?
If you want to use your own turn after these other people have been recognized. He was answering a question...
And that's what I'd like to do, I'd like to continue that answer.
Well, the person was satisfied with the answer.
My mistake, I apologize.
That's okay. It's just a question of whose time gets allocated to whom. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Dave Mocelli. Been working in this community for a long time and living about a little ways away. Last year, our K through six school, where we were sending our child, this is, back up, our town school went K through six. At that point, we had to choose another school to send our child to. We looked at a number of the surrounding public schools, we looked at the private schools in the community, and we were delighted to find MEMS and to send our son to MEMS. We had to pay out of our own pocket to do so because of the approved tuition rate in our current town, or our previous town, I should say. Our son's experience in seventh grade was fantastic, and we saw incredible growth in him, in his, the arts that were available to him, the language, everything just really blossomed for him. We were so excited that we moved to Manchester, and again, our younger son would have been able to attend MEMS in seventh grade. We moved a year earlier, we moved so that he could attend MEMS a year earlier in sixth grade as well. And we've been delighted by the program, by what the teachers give, what the school has to offer, and I would say that while I'm pretty sure the town we came from is not paying a penalty to Montpelier, it also is reflected in the quality of the program and the quality of the school, and unfortunately, that's why people are moving out of that town, and that's why we came to MEMS. So, thank you very much, and I would ask that you approve this budget.
I'm glad to hear you said you moved to Manchester, because I was worrying that I had a non-voter speaking here.
(laughter) Yes. No, in the middle.
My name is Francie Carrier, and I've lived here for about twenty-five years, and both my daughters went to MEMS, and I have two grandsons here now. And I'm asking you to please approve this budget. I am very distressed over the fact that the chairman of the school board would send out the letter that was in the editorial section of the journal. It's pretty sad to think that you would ask the taxpayers to vote down a budget when we are suffering here now. Kids are being pulled out and sent to the two private schools, which, there is something about choice, and I don't think that that's a bad thing, but we need to support public education. I had a father that was a teacher, and I strongly believe in it. But we are suffering here. My grandson in first grade, it's a nightmare what's going on in there, and you're asking them to cut more things. I don't know what grade your children are in, but I hope that they're having a better experience than he is. So I, as a grandmother, am asking you, please do not vote this budget down, because our kids are going to suffer for it. We will never sell our homes here, because people will not move here. When I first moved here, people were dying to come here to send their kids to MEMS, and now that's not what you're hearing. The moms and dads are trying to figure out how they can send their kids to Maple Street or the downtown school. So I beg you to please reconsider this and not vote this budget down.
Mr. Moderator, may I address that?
There's no question pending if you want to speak. Is there anyone else who's seated in the chairs who hasn't spoken on this question yet? on this question yet? I just gave the floor to Brian Vogel. Stay, stay in your seat there, and I'll, you'll be next.
I moved to Manchester seven years ago and have put four kids, one is currently in MEMS, in the sixth grade, three are now at BBA. But, all four went, all four, or the first three went through MEMS. To a point that was made earlier, money is not the problem. Okay? It's already been pointed out that Vermont spends more per student to educate their kids than any other state in the country. Over the last 10 years, our student count has gone down 19%, but per, education spending per pupil is up 42%. Money is not the problem. Okay? Since I've been here, I joined the board because my kids were in the school, because I wanted to make sure they were getting a quality education, because I wanted to help shape that. And also, I'm a taxpayer here, and I wanted to be sensitive to the taxpayers. Last year, the common level of assessment went against us in a very big way, and that's why we used the surplus to offset the tax rate. Because otherwise, we would have been facing, it was more than a 10 cent increase, and we felt that wasn't fair to the taxpayers. This year, and Montpelier does it constantly, they've been meddling in our affairs. It angers me to no end that the state will tell a community what they can spend to educate their kids. And yet, that is what Montpelier is doing with their allowable growth rate. To me, if we wanted to spend $17,000 per child and the community valued it, then we should be allowed to do that. But, to send money to Montpelier that has absolutely no benefit for our kids, I think is irresponsible as a board member. Okay? We have been making tremendous changes since I have been on the board. The day after, the day I was elected, Jackie Wilson resigned as principal. So, we promoted Sarah Merrill from assistant principal to principal. We had to find a new assistant principal. Bill Basic became dean of students. That lasted less than a year. We had to find a new assistant principal, Kim Tenner. She's still there. The following year, or a year later, Sarah Merrill resigned. We've added Tom Quinn, I have great faith in Tom. We've made other changes, including the kneecap standardized testing went away, so we brought in MAPS testing. It's a fantastic program. We test the kids three times a year, we get the results right back. One of the things that I found as a board member was the overall test scores are not that great. I've met, I've sat in conferences for all four of my kids. The teachers are phenomenal, they understood my kids, they got them, they helped them. And yet, I was seeing this huge disconnect between these teachers, who I thought really got my kids, and overall test scores for the school that didn't seem right. And MAPS is helping us uncover some of that, but we're way down on the learning curve on how to use that information. One of the things that we had the superintendent dig into last year is MAPS tests each student individually and projects what their growth should be based on the millions of kids around the country that take it. It's an individual student growth projection. So, we asked the superintendent to look into how many of our students, what percentage in each grade hit their individual targets each year. Last year, from fall to spring, between 40 and 75% of our kids hit their individual targets for math. That means 60, 25 to 60% didn't. Okay? To me, that's not good enough. I've heard over and over and over, since I've been in Manchester, that what a wonderful school we used to be. And I believe part of that was before Act 60 and Act 68, when they looked at us as a gold town, and they took all, took money away and sent it to Montpelier, and we get back somewhere, I think, on the order of about 80%. Maybe more, maybe less. But, we are funding other schools in the state. Money is not the problem. I really think that this budget and sending two and a half cents of a tax increase to Montpelier is not the right way to go. I still recommend that we vote down the budget. I don't think it's a shame, I don't think what I did was irresponsible. Our board meetings are pretty sparsely attended, and I understand that. People are busy, they have lives. You elect us because we're supposed to study the issues and make these decisions. As it was explained tonight, it's very complicated. We start looking at this stuff in October, and we pass a budget in January. So, to put forth a number and just say, "Well, let's see if people support it," to me was not the right decision. And to send money to Montpelier with no benefit to our kids is not the right decision. And the last point I'll make, because it's been said tonight, BBA struggled, and they're placing a lot of hope to only have a 1.8% increase. We're going to see another decline, most likely, in pupils next year of another 3.5%. We have deferred maintenance and other expenses that were cut out of this year that we will have to incur next year. It's more than likely that BBA, who sucked it up this year, will come back to us next year with a bigger increase, they'll probably need to. So, if we have declining students again next year, if we have a bigger increase request from BBA, and we're still going to have our normal growth of expenses and our teachers' contracts that call for 2.5 to 3% increases annually, we are going to be in a worse situation next year. So, to me, the appropriate thing to do is kick this budget back to the board and have us come back to the community with a more reasonable and responsible number.
Yes, just a minute, Tony, there's a woman in the rear who...
Hi, my name is Rebecca Sherman, I'm a Manchester resident, but also a teacher here, and in fact, a first-grade teacher here. So, there's a couple of different things I want to address, and, Mr. Moderator, you'll have to let me know if I'm out of line, I don't quite know exactly all the rules. But, in response to your question about what's going on here, I just wanted to point out some of the things that are going on in my particular classroom, so that people who aren't familiar with MEMS have a better understanding. So, with a couple of the people who mentioned about first grade, here are some of the things that I'm doing to address those problems. So, for my literacy block, we have differentiated reading groups based on ability, so that I can meet kids where they are and target instruction. And also, during their independent work time, I can vary the learning opportunities, so I can best suit their learning style and what they still need. To address the problem with math, we're going to start doing some flexible groupings, so that, once again, we can target kids with the learning points that they most need. Some of the other things are that we, as teachers, myself, we developed a curricula for social studies and science based on ever-changing standards from various places. Another thing is that I'm on the farm-to-school team. We are trying to incorporate that into our classrooms, so we've done a lot of cooking demonstrations, and we've brought kids down to the kitchen, so they have some hands-on learning experiences. We've also talked to the PTO, and they partnered with us to buy bulbs, so that we could plant some flowers outside, so they get some planting experience. Also, taken my own time to research some classroom management systems, to kind of beef up our parent communication, so that parents are not only well-informed about what's going on with their own child, but what's going on in the classroom. And then, with other parts of the day, my students go to art, which is the very first thing I ever noticed here when I came for my interview, is how beautiful the artwork was and how well it was displayed. They also have physical activity or gym, and they also go to music, which paves the way for those concerts and plays that you see when they get to be in eighth grade, and when they go to BBA, they're well-prepared. So, that's kind of what I wanted to say about what's going on at MEMS for, from, for me. And just two other points, as far as the point about freezing salaries, for someone like me who already works well, 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 and others in the room too, well beyond our contracted hours, because there's absolutely no way that you could ever do your job successfully if you didn't, I don't really think that's a way to solve the problem. I certainly feel like I earned my increase. And then, to the point about MAPS that Brian made, you, statistics are misleading, and so, you may look at the people who made their progress and the people who didn't, but unless you really take a closer look, you really don't know how much progress a student has made, because if there's, if the student misses their target by one point, no, they didn't meet their target. So, it negates the amount of progress that they did make. So, it, just because they're one point shy, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that they haven't grown an incredible amount. And so, I would urge you to pass the budget. I think there's certainly structural systematic changes that could be looked at, but it's not something you want to make a rash to shison about, and probably needs a year worth of time to really investigate all the possibilities. So, that's all.
Thank you.
My name is Tony Davis. I can't speak here tonight to the satisfaction of students with the school, parents with the school programs, and I think this is an issue that only the parents and the students can debate with the administration and have something that's satisfactory. The only thing I want to talk about for a second here is the money. And on page 37 of the town report, if you compare the last three years, fiscal year 15, 16, and 17, the proposal that we want to vote on this year is fiscal year 17 for $11,008, and last year, fiscal year 16, we were $11,006. So, the proposal is calling for $150,000 more than last year. Fiscal year 15 was a $12 billion proposal, and our, or the request this year is for $200,000 less than that. So, my conclusion is from fiscal year 16, the year we're in, to 17, the one that we're asked to vote on, is an additional $150,000, and I say to myself, "What's the big deal?" As far as the money is concerned, my opinion is, one man's opinion, the extra request for $150,000 is no big deal. But, the thing that does get my attention is that the per-student equalized pupils spending is 7% higher. And I can't correlate the numbers. And one of the things that I can think of is that, and I think it's somewhat true, but I don't have the numbers, that there's a declining school population. Now, if you've got, you want to compare a couple of years, and you take a particular specific class, one year it has 15 students, the next year it may have 12 students. To the layperson, me, it seems to me it costs the same amount of money to educate 12 kids as the 15, because your overhead cannot be adjusted up or down with the differences in the class sizes. So, I, one of the questions I have is some of this 7% increase per student, because of, is it because of a declining school population? And if that is the case, and I'm sure there are other things too, like inflationary costs of benefits, healthcare costs, and other things that are very difficult to control, but if you've got a declining school population, if this accounts for a lot of the 7% increase, then, you can't adjust year to year, but there must be, must come a time, and I'm not, I don't think that this is the time, but if you've got a continuing school population on the decline, somewhere along the line, you're going to cross the line where you cannot be justified in maintaining the total overhead. If you're going to educate 1,000 kids, and the population, say, declines to 700, you cannot be justified in incurring the same overhead. Somewhere along the line, the overhead has to be adjusted. So, with those thoughts, I would just, like some idea, what kind of a school population decline, if any, do we have? And does that contribute to this 7% increase in per-pupil spending or not?
Mr. French.
Yeah, that was very well said. Yes. The, the increase in per-pupil spending is a fraction, the edge, the cost in the numerator and the number of students in the denominator, and certainly part of the issue, $150,000 sounds reasonable, but the decline in equalized pupils is one that makes that perhaps very expensive. The, I'm looking on page 45 of the book, back to that, what we call the three-year average sheet, which is a required document in all school district reports in Vermont. On line 15, which is right in the middle of the, in the page, you'll see the equalized pupils. And there's a technical definition for equalized pupils, but it's fair to say it represents the number of students. Now, this, this is a number pre-K through 12 in the school district, so that's, when we talk about district pupils, we're not talking about MEMS, we're talking about pre-K through 12. So, you can see in the same years, the comparison on the line 15, in fiscal year 14, we had 668.40 equalized pupils. Fiscal year 15, 648.85. Fiscal year 16, 625. And fiscal year 17, we're projecting 604. There's a mechanism in the law that prevents us from losing more than 3.5% of our equalized pupils in any given year. If we didn't have that mechanism, our real number of equalized pupils is under 600, it's closer to 596, somewhere in that ballpark. So, from my perspective, and I work, you know, with our 11 different school districts, what you have in Manchester is the classic scenario that we hear about in northern New England and we're hearing about in Vermont. We have costs going up, and there's been nominal cuts, we've done a fairly good job of reducing programs when we could over the years. But, those costs are not on the same trajectory in a downward slope as the number of equalized pupils is declining. So, statewide, we are reaching a point where this is a critical, critical decision-making point for the state. I think that's why ultimately Act 46 was approved. We're going to have limited, in my, this is my personal opinion, school boards are going to have a very, very difficult time matching that trajectory in this kind of scenario. You either have to recruit new students to come in, or fundamentally restructure the system, and that's what Act 46 is about.
I think I understand what you, what you said. That, and if I'm, if I understand you, then I say to the school board, that, and you may be already doing this, and I don't want to be judgmental, and I'm not here criticizing you. I'm, in my own mind at least, I'm constructive, I hope, in my comments, but somewhere along the line, I think you need to project, if you can, into the future what's going to happen with the school population. And to try to come up with contingency programs that, with a, with a shrinking school population, if it continues to do this, and who knows, maybe it won't, maybe it'll start to go the other way, but maybe a contingency plan has to be developed, for the assumption that we're going to have continuing declines, incremental declines. And so, at which point do you start to shrink the programs, shrink the diversity? I'm not asking for an answer tonight at all. I'm just suggesting that if you are not thinking this way, that, that you should, and maybe you would respond to my comment and say, "Well, we are thinking this way," and that's fine, if you are. But, no one, it's almost impossible to read the future. Nobody can read the future two, three, or four years out, five years out. It's impossible to read the future. But, I think it's not impossible to develop plans for somewhat of a negative future. But I think it's not impossible to develop plans for somewhat of a negative future, if you have not already done so.
There's a little debate in my mind whether that was a question or not.
I don't think it was, but I will call on you at this time, if you'd like to.
Okay. Just to address that last point, after Dan spoke, you, you asked about projections, and we should be looking into projections as well as contingency plans. Dan, I believe your projection is in the next seven years for the Manchester population, student population to be down about to five hundred or so, if I remember that correctly? It's, it's, but it's still projected to go down. It's safe to say that we have looked at it, and based on Dan's projections, that the numbers are going to continue to go down. That's to your first point. To your second point, contingency plan, we are actively engaged in two contingency plans right now. We have a, what's called the Seven Oh Six Committee, which is involved in combining school districts, Dorset, Floodbrook, as well as Manchester, into one. And we have an ad hoc committee, which is looking into the possibility of going independent. So we are looking at contingency plans. Of course, the other plan is to cut, 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 until you have nothing. We don't like cutting, and I don't think, I can speak for everybody on this board, nobody likes to cut. We, we, we wish we had more programs. We had plenty of ideas for more programs. We are faced with, as we've discussed, ad nauseam here, a situation where not only can we not act on those ideas for increased programs, but four cents of our tax increase doesn't even go to the kids. And that's what's concerning me. But I hope I answered those two questions to you and to everybody else. We, we didn't come to this lightly. We, as Brian said, we've been looking at the budget since October, but honestly, it's something that we think about year-round.
John Wilson.
I just wanted to address the test results. It was a previous question, am I still able to address that? All right. So I'm John Wilson. I, I went to MEMS, I grew up here, and I sent my oldest daughter to MEMS, and my youngest daughter will go to MEMS as well. I just wanted to, there's, test results came up, and I just wanted to provide, can you, oh, I'm sorry. All right. All right. Test results came up, and I just wanted to provide another indicator of test results. Now, we have, what's here is called is MAP testing, and that's something that the BRSU chooses to test students with, for progress monitoring. And we look at growth projections and things like, things like that. Now, we used to have, in Vermont, and much New England, these kneecap tests, New England Common Assessment Program. Those have since been replaced with what is called Smarter Balance Tests, and they're S-Back for short. And this is a computer adaptive test that tests students based on, you know, their skill level and adapts how they answer questions. So I just wanted to share some concrete measures. I don't want to get into individual value judgments here, adhere to the policy that, you know, I don't want to overspeak for the whole board, I just want to get into some concrete examples here. So this, so this is all available to, through the state site, there's a Smarter Balance portal. So I just want to share with you what our test results from last year looked like, to give you some concrete examples. So last year, all public schools are required to take the Smarter Balance Test. Last year was given to students from grades three to eight in English and math. In English, MEMS outperformed state averages except in fifth grade. That means there were a higher percentage of students that demonstrated proficiency in English. In math, MEMS, MEMS students outperformed state averages in all grade levels except for fifth and eighth grade, and the differences in the eighth grade cohort were only marginal. Now, comparing MEMS with the state is a comparison, so when I, when I was talking about better, I'm talking about level, degree of total proficiency, and that's measured by a percentage. Now, comparing MEMS with the state is a comparison worth looking at, because both, last year, both the state and MEMS had a free and reduced lunch population of thirty-nine percent. Ours has since risen. Now, this FRL rate is a good proxy for poverty, and it's often used by educators as a proxy for poverty. And if you look at Smarter Balance, or any test results really, they often break them up into FRL rates and not, not FRL rates, and you can see the differences are stark, and there, there is a correlation there. I'm not going to get into the causal or not. But to put this in more, and so on the higher achieving end, I want to share a few things with you. MEMS has some impressive stats to boast there. Here are a few stats. Thirty-eight percent of third and fourth graders are proficient, proficient with distinction in English. That's the highest level, the highest bucket you can get into. Thirty-four percent of sixth graders were proficient with distinction in math compared to just twelve percent in the state. And twenty-nine percent of these students were also proficient with distinction in English compared to the state averages of only, of eighteen percent. So I know that these are only test scores, and only one measure of student achievement. But based on these assessments, MEMS is performing better than, than state averages on most indicators. Now, I don't want to diminish Jamie or Francie, your, you know, individual concerns, this is only one measure. But I also, it's, it's important, so I think it's a good measure for us to look at, and when we compare ourselves to, you know, let's say Floodbrook, we're pretty comparable to Floodbrook. And we do need to keep in mind that, what is the goal, what, you know, what do we want to look at here? Do we want to look at the test scores at the end of the day, or do you want to look at the growth of students? Right? And when we take that FRL into consideration, that shifting demographic, then that's going to, that's going to influence how we interpret these things. So hopefully that sheds some light on where, that's some concrete evidence for the test scores, another example. So, and I, I don't, and maybe this is a question for Dan, if it might be worth, I have the button numbers here, but I'm not an expert on this, if we could put in terms for the estimated education taxes on, for someone who owns a three hundred thousand dollar home in Manchester, who is not income sensitized, so if you own, earn over ninety thousand dollars, you're not income sensitized, so maybe we can hear, what is the, what did the person pay this this year, and what are they going to pay under the proposed budget, all other things unchanged, and some idea of how much of that is penalty? I, I have to think here, but I'm not, it's a lot of calculations for you, Dan, I'm putting you under the gun, so. But maybe if we can have some estimate of that, or if you guys in the audience can calculate on your own, you have some idea about what this tax rate means in easy-to-understand the language. Thank you.
Sylvia, have you spoken on this? You may go next.
Yes, but I thought there were other people sitting behind me that were sitting there before I got up.
There may be, but I, he's a big boy, and he can wait.
Fine, fine. Okay. Well, I hope you don't ask me to leave after this statement, but if that comes to be, that comes to be. This is my thought about the number of children that we no longer have going to MEMS that I think we should have. I believe that the number of children that qualify from our Manchester center and village area are equal, if not the same, as they have been for a number of years. I don't think that student population has changed. So what has changed? What has changed compared to many years ago is school choice. The number of independent or private schools that have cropped up within the confines of Manchester. Consequently, many parents, especially those who are able to afford the extra cost, if there's an extra cost to the issue, to go to some other school other than the public school. And they make that choice. And so we have maybe thirty kids over at Maple Street School, we have another twenty kids at another school, another fifteen at some other school, and before you know it, we're a hundred less children at Manchester. That is what is hurting us, and whether we can compete with those schools or not, it's another thing. Now, I am one for public school education, and I think it's unfortunate that those children who live here and are of the proper age to attend Manchester Elementary School, this is the place to come. But that's not what is happening. So that's it in a nutshell. You can talk about everything else that you want to talk about, but that's where it's at. I think we do have very qualified teachers here. There's hardly a teacher that goes into the field that doesn't have a lot to offer. Very few come unprepared and are hired. Thank you.
Nothing that would cause anyone to ask you to leave?
Well, I believe that's enough.
Patrick.
Thank you. Michael. I've lived in five states, and been in Vermont thirty years, and have lived in three different school districts. Our problem is much bigger than this town and this school and this board and this budget. As has been pointed out, we spend more per child than any state in the Union. That's forty-nine. And this is not a wealthy town. I have grandkids in Connecticut and Pennsylvania, they have more money. We spend more money than they do. We're running this state school system on a nineteenth-century format. This town of Boston has the same number of students as the state of Vermont. They have a superintendent of schools. Granted, he or she has a pretty big staff, I would think. We have sixty-one superintendents of school. Couple of years ago, I was living in Arlington, their superintendent retired. They got a high school and a grade school. They had to have another superintendent, so that was voted in, because as somebody down there said, "It doesn't come out of our pocket." Comes out of the state's pocket. We are the state. And I think we need a fundamental redo of the whole structure of how we're doing this. We have a teacher for every eight kids. I grew up in Detroit, and it was a long time ago, but I will assure you that we have a much better staff, much better facilities than, than they have there, or Baltimore, where I lived for a while. And I'm running for the board because I think I would like to be a small little piece of helping to restructure the way Vermont does things.
Excuse me, you're not allowed to campaign during this meeting.
Oh, I'm, I'm done.
Thank you.
Don't hold for me.
In the middle, here.
Sure. Ooh, I don't know if I remembered what I was going to say. Sylvia, I'm going to piggyback on what you were saying as well. I'd like to take this opportunity, first of all, Fran Marino, resident of Manchester, also a teacher here at MEMS. I'd like to take this opportunity to enlist the services of as many folks here and out in our town to become cheerleaders for our school. I think that's a big part of what's happening. There's so much negativity being tossed around, out on the sidewalks, or on the walking path, wherever. And some of it is legitimate, but gosh, there's an awful lot of wonderful things happening here that folks just aren't even aware of. And part of the reason that they're not aware is because once your children don't go here, you don't come to the functions that happen here anymore, so you really don't know. Anna Nicholson, who teaches fifth grade, runs incredible programs, community service programs. Last year, the St. Baldrecks Day, brave the shave, oh my God, we were in tears. Anybody who was here and witnessed that, it was an incredible goosebump experience, witnessed by the entire school and some community. That's just one thing, one little thing that went on. She does all kinds of, the Nothing But Nets, along with Ted Schiffman, raising money for just anything you can think of, getting the kids involved and helping them to understand what it's all about, to share and to give. Math Counts, G O B, essay winners, Green Mountain Chorus, Green Mountain Band, our spring musical, seventh and eighth graders, putting on incredible shows. I know I'm forgetting a ton of things, because there's so many things that go on here. But we don't have a PR person. We don't have somebody putting it in the paper for us. And by the time we teachers finish running these programs, we're on to the next mission, and we don't have time to promote ourselves. So a lot of folks don't even know what's happening here. We need cheerleaders. We need cheerleaders who are going to cheer for a team that's really working hard and really doing well. And I know John Wilson is taking this campaign, and he's attempting to form some committees to help with that task, and I applaud you for that. But I think we need everybody's help. And stop bashing, not bashing, stop saying all the negative things, there's negative things that go on everywhere. There's negative things that go on in Maple Street, and the downtown school, and Long Trail, and Burn Burton. But right now, that's all we're dwelling on here. Why? Why aren't we dwelling on the great, great programs and the great teachers that we have here? Because you're not seeing them. And I encourage everybody to get more involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, from the rear, someone who hasn't spoken yet on this article, S V M.
Hi, my name is Kathy O'Reilly, and I am a four-year resident of Manchester, but I grew up in Vermont, I grew up in Chittenden County. My daughter went to MEMS and to BBA. I am also a public health nurse, I work for the Vermont Department of Health. I just happen to be the school liaison for all the supervisory unions in Bennington County. So I work very closely with the coordinated school health teams at different schools, as well as all the school nurses. And I have to say that I've been distressed at some of the things that I've heard, spoken about first grade, about teachers and things here this evening. I get a little, I, I find it hard to believe that a first-grade teacher has to get up and start explaining exactly what she's doing in her classroom to everybody here to justify what she has to face every day. And I want everybody to understand something, and this isn't just in Manchester, this is all over Bennington County. It's just coming to Manchester now. I want to follow up on John Wilson's comment. We are experiencing an ever-increasing rate of children who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. What does that mean? It means that our schools are a microcosm of our greater society. And our teachers in this school are dealing with children who are coming to school, who are not available to learn, for whatever reason that is, whether it's because their parents are suffering from addiction, whether it's alcohol or opiates, whether it's because they're in foster care, whether it's because they're couch surfing, whether it's because they have underlying issues that require an IEP or something like that. These teachers are not only dealing with children who come from stable families, but children who have a lot on their plate and were still showing pretty good test scores. So I would like to say, I'm not going to tell you whether or not you should vote for the budget or not, but I want to say that I really think that the idea that a teacher has to get up at our floor meeting and justify what she does in her classroom is unbelievable to me. Thank you.
Whoever in the rear there was first to say, Michael Cohen.
Michael Cohen, I've been living here since last century. As are many of us. So this question, I think, is for Dan, but if you can't answer it, if someone else could. So my thing with Act Sixty, if you win over the penalty, as, as we did here, being quote a gold town, the money we sent to Montpelier was cycled back into education into, into other communities. With the penalty with Act Forty-Six, where does that go? Does that go back into education? Does it just go into the state coff- Does it just go into the state coffers? What happens to that penalty money?
Yeah, the Act Forty-Six penalty goes back into the Ed Fund, the overall tax revenues that are being raised statewide, so it's a closed loop. So, I was referring to that property yield value earlier, that's the one number that the legislature hasn't approved yet, they will approve that in May. Part of what they've been struggling with, to a certain extent, is trying to figure out how much taxes are gonna be raised statewide. So, when they started lowering the penalty in late January, they had to start lowering the property yield. Basically, the bill is gonna get paid statewide, whether that bill gets paid in the form of penalty in some districts or a broader raising of the tax rate, it's a closed system. So, it all goes into that one pot.
Okay, thank you.
But I would argue it's an open system in that some of that money will go to school districts, incentives to school districts to merge sooner rather than later. But I'm supposed to stay out of the argument here, I'm sorry. Next, from the back row there.
My name is Tracy Hughes and I'm a member of the Manchester community and also a teacher here at MEMS. And I sat here on Saturday afternoon, well into the evening, and I was really proud of my community as I watched us really look towards the future and think about what we wanted Manchester to be. And we were really eager and quick to invest in programs that would make our town stronger and richer and invite people here. Let's not forget the people who are here. We want wonderful things for our community. Our school is our heart and our soul. And we can make the roads as beautiful as we want, or as narrow as wide, we can put in new playing fields, but we need to keep our heart beating. So, I urge you to invest in one of the most important things our community has to offer, and that's our school. So, please vote this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the DuPonts want to flip a coin for who goes next? Tony, go ahead. Sorry.
Carol's had her chance to say a few words. A long time ago, when I was out of town, struggling with a terrific business problem in New York, I was elected treasurer of the local private school. And the budget was a lot less than we're talking about here, maybe a billion dollars a year. And we owed the United California Bank a million dollars. So, my first act was, no longer, you're a friendly chairman of the Public Relations Committee, it's my job to tell you when you're broke, and you're really broke. And to make a long story short, we managed to get the school in the black and I was very proud, every year we presented the budget, that the percentage of the budget that went to instructional expense, that is, paying teachers, always was a bigger piece of the pie every year. So, I think that it's quite possible to vote down the budget and come up with a new budget that stays below the penalty and get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. In the rear.
Hi, my name is Kathy Boudreau. We've heard a lot this evening about losing students and the dramatic impact that that has on education here at MEMS. And I think the surest way to lose students is to defeat the budget. In five years, people won't remember this conversation, they won't remember the details, but they will remember that this community did not support education here at MEMS.
Thank you. Austria, have you spoken on this question yet? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Austria Kilburn. And all of a sudden, I went blank.
I have that effect.
That's you, yes, Michael. I wonder if anybody has an answer as to why students are leaving MEMS, or why the community is declining. Is it because our Manchester's population is getting older, there are not that many elementary school children? Or what is the draw with the other school? What can we, as a community, do to help retain kids at MEMS? What support can we lend as a community? Couple of the comments that I heard about the, some parents felt that they were having, their children were having a not-so-good experience in the classroom. I read between the lines and maybe I shouldn't, you tell me if I'm wrong, but are you needing some sort of a behavioral support in school? The lady who spoke, a couple of, who was working with the BRSU, mentioned that a lot of people, kids come to school not prepared to work. I used to work in special ed here at MEMS and I fully understand that some children live in circumstances where they may not be receptive to what the teacher says at all times. But again, what can we do as a community? If you have any ideas about that, how, you know, we can be organized or whatever, I think it would be valuable to know that. As Brian said, it is not all about money.
Does anybody want to bite that off for the board?
I think what Fran spoke to is a good place to start. If you look at, you know, the common trend throughout Vermont, the story is that we're losing, we're getting older and we're losing students. That may not be the case in this region. If you look at all the schools in fifteen-mile radius here, no one is really losing school, except for Courier. No one is losing students like MEMS. And Arlington's starting to pick up students again. And so, Maple Street has about twenty-five Manchester students and Long Trail has some students. And so, you know, we have students, you know, are people not moving here, are people leaving? I don't know. But, you know, that's, you know, kind of been the elephant in the room for a while, why are students leaving? So, I think, you know, the dynamic has changed in, when I went to MEMS, you know, we didn't have surrounding independent schools. And I'm not trying to say a monopoly of a public school is the right thing. What I am saying is that this dynamic has shifted and that we need, maybe need to start thinking more like an independent school in that self-promotion. All the schools around us have people on staff that promote the school. And, you know, it's very hard to see, you know, they're putting stuff out to the community about people paid to put up stuff out about all the achievements, and we have so many good achievements. Just look last week, you know, our math counts, four students from MEMS, middle schoolers, made it to the state, the state meet, or the state competition, and no one else in southern Vermont did that. You know, so spreading the word like that, but that's hard to do in a, when you have a strained system and strained financial resources, to move from education to educating your students to promoting these great things. And so, my opinion, you know, starting to think more like an independent school, doesn't mean you have to be an independent school. There's some simple things we can do. And I think that we've done it in the past and we've had people, someone on staff in the past, to promote the school. But I think, you know, really starting to engage in, like Fran said, engage in what is the positive things going on here, and that could be a good place to start. And I'm sure some of my fellow board members, you know, could add on to what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for those comments. I think you're spot on on a number of things. The one I'd like to address is the need to think more like a private school. When the board voted up or down on the budget, Brian and I voted against the budget. We do understand that we don't have any say. The budget goes to the people and the people get to decide. It's just our opinion. I'll speak for myself, not for Brian, but I thought that, and also at the time, it should be clear that we were looking at five hundred thousand dollars in penalty. It's a lot of money. But as far as thinking like a private school, that is one of the things that I had hoped to achieve when I voted against the budget, and I stated it before there was a vote. I asked Tom Quinn a couple of questions, they were pointed questions, they were tough questions. I'm not going to repeat them now, you can look at Jeanette, or Jeanette, pardon me. But I don't think we are quite at the point where we are thinking like a private school. If this were BBA, I believe Mark Tashian, with his staff, would come up with a plan that would limit spending increase. I say that because he did. Now, he has different resources, I understand that, but the programs that they put in place are long-term, forward-thinking. The Mountain Campus is a great example, it's a wonderful program. I could go on and on about programs such as that. And I don't think that we're at the point where we're trying to take a good, hard, analytical look at what we're doing, at how we're educating our children, to make sure that there are programs for these kids that prepare them for BBA. So, in thinking like a private school, maybe we have to have a more difficult budget process. And I will now speak for Brian because he wrote the letter. He, I believe it's his understanding that, you know, he's not looking for slashing, he's not looking for decimation, he is just looking for rationality and a good reason why we would send, it's difficult to say, but maybe in the neighborhood of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to Montpelier with no benefit back to us. So, that is one way that a private school thinks. They do have to think in dollar terms, and unfortunately, we do. So, also, I would suggest that we do reach out. I know in prior sessions, I've asked Dan if we could reach out to those students that go to Courier or Medawee that don't choose MEMS. Why? For various reasons, it didn't happen, and that's fine. But there's nothing stopping us from going out and polling those people. Admirably, John has been pushing for promoting MEMS. Kudos to you, John. Well done. But I think it's difficult to promote if you haven't done a hard analysis as to why these people are leaving. Ask them. I have. And the answer, I think, is not a lack of knowledge of the programs, it's a little deeper than that. And it's a small community. It's very difficult to look our friends, our neighbors in the eye and say that this school is not delivering what we're paying for. It's very, very hard. I understand that. I've heard a lot of emotional arguments tonight in favor of the budget. I haven't heard a convincing, logical argument to the contrary. So, I would suggest that regardless of whether you want to approve the budget or not, I went behind what the town votes one hundred percent. But I do think we need to take a very hard look, and it's not up to the board. The board really is just a deliberative body. Brian mentioned that our meetings are sparsely populated. I'm sorry?
Say anything at your meeting.
Let's, excuse me.
Sylvia, I, woe is the person that stops you from speaking. So, anyway, I think as a community, yes, we can get through this. We can, we can join forces and we can build something better, but it's going to take a lot of work, it's going to take us banding together. It's not one night a year, it's not two nights a year. Poor Mr. Drunzig is at more meetings than I can think of. Mark Kaplan, you get like one night a week to yourself. It takes more than just one or two people. We all have to be honest and really give a hard look. Thank you.
Austria Kilburn's ten minutes are now up. So, we'll move on to Frank Sutton.
Yeah, good evening. I have been a resident here in Manchester for many, many years, and for more years than that, as long as I can remember, I was teaching down at Mount Anthony in Bennington, teaching foreign language. And in the high school there, we had a policy that you could not have a program unless you had a minimum of ten students in it. And thinking back, when I started teaching in New York, in the city, I remember having a French class with forty-four students in it. And at that time, we started what was called ALM, which is Audio Lingual Method. So, there was a lot of conversation in the class, and you can imagine what it would be like if you had forty-four students doing French in the class. But the point that I would like to relate to, in the budget here, under the ESL, the English as a second language, you, for the fifteen budget, you budgeted so much, let's say roughly fifty, but you had gone well over that, doubled it, and then for sixteen and seventeen, you went back to about the same numbers in the fifty range. My question is, for both the elementary and the high school, do you have, do you have an idea of how many students are learning English as a second language here?
Mr. French, appropriately enough.
ESL's English as a second language, that number in the budget varies in any given year based on the number of students that are eligible and need those programs. I do not know what the number is currently, but it varies. The budget number is directly tied to the number of students that are eligible. We've seen those kids come and go over the years.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth O'Donnell, and tonight is kind of my swan song, so I'm gonna be bold and brave because I'm off the board after tonight. What I'd like to say is I think there's a couple of different things going on. I think we have a lot of really important discussions about what's going on in this building and the needs of our students. And I think it's not necessarily about the money. I think we need to decide that we have increased students of needs, of all kinds of needs, and we have declining enrollment. And so, we have to say to the really smart, amazing faculty and administration that we have in this building, like, let's get thinking. How do we restructure? How do we reuse what our current resources are? You know, for me, I've got two kids currently in this school, and there's all different abilities that go on. Is there, do we combine different grades? Do we say K to two is some sort of pod where you've got kids who are advanced, maybe who are working with some older kids and kids who need some more resources or working with people under? I don't know. I don't know the answer. I'm not, I'm not a teacher in this building. But it would be really nice for us to maybe think about it, not just as a budget issue or money, but we're in a new day and age. Someone said we're kind of dealing in nineteenth-century or twentieth-century education. Things are changing a lot. One of the problems when we start talking about budgets is, one of the things Fran was talking about, we have all these amazing extracurriculars, all these amazing opportunities, they shouldn't be called extra, they're part of our students' education, and that always seems to be one of the first things that people look at to slash. I would like us to have people in this building, as well as the community, participate in some real hard discussions about what's going on in the building, how we can make some changes, and it's not just necessarily a budget issue. I think we have to think bigger about what's going on. So, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. In the back, Carol, I think you've spoken once, is that right? Okay, next person.
Hi, Mike, thanks. I'm Sugrilla, Spanish teacher at Burn Burton, and I want... And I wanted to, just on behalf of our World Language Department, to talk about how important the MEMS Spanish program has been to us as it sends many students who are well-prepared and they go right into Spanish II. And that way, as a junior, they're able to take AP if they choose to go that far. And as a senior, they can come in the classroom and be assistants. They can go out and do field studies. They can continue on in a cultures class that's offered. But without MEMS support and the other two surrounding schools that have a Spanish program that, in the middle school level, we would never, ever be able to get our kids as far as we do. And that way, with AP, they can get it on their college transcripts if they do well and have that so that colleges will see their grades. So I thank MEMS for the program that you do. And my concern, if the budget does not pass, is that someone will do a Band-Aid effect really quickly and just say, oh, well, we gotta do something, we have to cut something, instead of giving it long, hard thought over another year and pass the budget now, let you guys think long and hard, perhaps more community people will come out and actually participate in your meetings. So, thank you.
One more from the rear, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Demir Vong. And I've lived in Manchester now about seven months with my husband and my fifth grader. I did grow up in Vermont and got a very good primary education here. Took me to many places in the world. But the reason I'm here tonight is to learn the process. This is my first public school, school meeting, and I find it very fascinating and very cordial, which is wonderful. But I also want to say, I am one of the few people, I think, in the last year who's brought a new student to MEMS, a fifth grader. And we have had a tremendous experience. We support public schools, but we did look at all our options because we're learning about choice in the state. And we have a lot of good choices. But we wanted to try MEMS and give it a shot. And we've had nothing but a wonderful experience. Fifth grade has been tremendous for our son. We came from Hershey, Pennsylvania, the second, quote, best school district in Pennsylvania. And we have had a much better experience in a smaller school with smaller class size. We have about 15 kids in the class. We went from 26 in Hershey down to 15. Huge difference. So I want to thank all the teachers that I do believe, and administrators and school board members, and everyone who's working really hard. Because I think Vermont is coming to a point where you do have to make some really tough choices. This year may not be the time to do it, but I think it's going to hit the fan by next year. And I think coming up with more creative solutions as a community and coming to the table together, which I'm sure the board would love to see, might give us a better run at it next year. Mostly, I just want to say, we've had a wonderful experience with MEMS. I will continue to promote it in the community, and I, I hope other parents will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's getting a bit warm in here and I'm getting kind of dry, but the nights that we worked on the budget were long and tireless, much like the night tonight. And there was quite a bit more attendance to those budgeting meetings than any other school board meeting. I think we went from an average population of four to maybe 140 the first night and down to maybe 100 the second night. And when the budget was finally approved, the motion was to let the taxpayers make the decision. And I think that's what it really boils down to, is letting the taxpayers make the decision. One of the other messages was tell Montpelier how we really feel about educating our children. Do we feel that educating them to their standard or to our standard is acceptable? And I think what we've decided by putting that budget forward was to educate the children to the standard that we feel comfortable with.
Thank you. In the rear, there, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Sarah O'Keefe. I'm the president of the MEMS PTO. This is my third and final year as president. So if anyone has a burning desire to take on that role, it's going to be open in May. I, I just have really a comment and a suggestion. Whatever happens with this budget, there's, you know, half the people in this room are going to be pleased and half are going to be displeased. But here's what I see. Two sides are being spoken of tonight. And it's, it's to boil it down to a really simple level. Is it, is MEMS a good school or is MEMS a bad school? And it's, it's, of course, MEMS is a good school. I think people have gotten up and spoken passionately about the, the good things that happen here. There are many, many good things that happen here. I'm really proud of some of the things the PTO has, has had a hand in, in terms of those positive things. I think what Fran says is true, but I, I don't think we just need cheerleading. I think what we need is open and honest discussion because there are also some issues here. And they've been very well documented and discussed over the past few years, but maybe not tackled in an open and honest way in a forum where everybody can kind of come to the table and not personalize the issues. So I think we do need to, to promote the, there are amazing things here. There are amazing teachers here. A couple of, you know, kid, teachers that have made huge differences in my kids' lives are sitting right back here. We, we do need to celebrate that, promote it, bring community members in to help with this effort. We also need to have some honest discussion about some of the issues here. And there are some communication and transparency issues that I think could really be tackled. I think it's hard for people to rally around the positive. I certainly can tell you I have trouble getting people to PTO meetings. We're extremely, we may even be less roundly attended than the school board meetings, if you can believe that. But I think that open and honest dialogue and coming together after this, whatever happens with this budget, is kind of the key to success. I can, I can tell you, among the other things Ms. Sherman listed that she does, she also faithfully attends every single PTO meeting and is an advocate. So I guess just a suggestion, I think we need to be honest, face some of the issues we have, try to tackle them together as a community. We have rich resources in this community and could do it. I think we just get a little too caught up in, is it a good place or is it a bad place? It's a great place that has some issues we should try to tackle over the next year.
Thank you. Tony, have you spoken on this issue yet? Tony, have you spoken on this issue yet? I can't remember.
Yeah, I did once.
Okay, so Joe, I don't believe has.
I have not.
Joe Cassidy? Go ahead.
I'd like some clarity on the special education. The, the bulk of it is an assessment from the SU. And when I look at the SU budget, it looks like it's about a 3% increase over 2016. And when I look at the assessments, it's something like, depending on how much, how much revenue is offset, it's either a 19% increase or a 22% increase. And it looks to me like the total increase in spending on the budget is special education. And it looks to me like the difference is the allocation method. I see there's a note in the overview, but I don't quite grasp the significance of that. I'm hoping somebody can explain that.
Could someone explain the special ed budget, particularly with regards to the increases?
The, yes, the special ed budget itself, it's the first point I'd make. Last year, under, required with the law, we centralized special education costs at the supervisory union level. So that, what that means is pretty much every special ed cost is now in the supervisory union budget and then gets assessed out to the local districts. So that was a structural change that affected how these costs were portrayed in the budget.
And that was the case in 2016 or just in 2017?
Starting in 2016. We have, still have some local costs in the, in the budget. Those are largely paraeducator costs. There's an option under the law, whether paraeducators had to be centralized or not. We had that option. We decided as a supervisory union not to do that, largely because those individuals are often local employees as well and wear a couple of different hats. But to your point, you are correct that the costs are up approximately 3%, but then the assessments themselves are up considerably more. And that's, there's a good summary of this on the flyer, on the page that starts the top summary of the budget. And it's, this is the last little triangle point on the bottom describes the special ed, starts with the special ed assessment for the supervisory union. So similar to how Act 60 works, you know, we have funds coming from Montpelier with Act 60. Your assessments are only part of the way we pay for special education. We have other local revenues that can be used to pay for special education, largely grants. We've lost a chunk of grant money last year. We had a deficit last year in special education. And we changed the methodology by which we assessed out residential placement costs for students. So all those things required that assessments had to be increased to make up for the shortfall of other revenues. So the costs are up about 3%. The assessment budget has to make up the other shortfall in grant revenue, the deficit, and increased residential placement costs, or how we allocated those costs among the other districts in the supervisory union.
Does that answer your question?
I, perhaps it did, but I, I guess I just don't grasp it.
Yeah, so for instance, we have a, a grant fund called IDEA-B, which is a large federal grant that comes in to pay for special education. It's an annual amount of money we get to help support those costs. That grant was reduced, so we can't cut our programs the same way. We have to backfill that with an increase in local assessments.
So is that grant recognized in the BRSU budget or in the Manchester budget?
That's correct. In the BRSU budget. This all gets netted out in the BRSU budget. There's a detailed page that shows the offset and the different assessments and how the assessments were built.
So when I look at the, that, that spreadsheet that shows the calculation of the assessment, those, those grants are netted in there, I presume, or are they not?
You talking about page 55?
They are netted out. I'm trying to find the right page here.
55 in Part A.
Yes, it's on page 55. Breaks out a detail. This is in Part A of the Manchester Town Report. Page 55 shows, shows the, how the, the assessments were built in each different cost area.
So I think Joe's question was, that reflects netting out of the grants? Is that correct?
That's correct. The assessments, and I'm looking for the revenue page, on page 50. On the top of that page, that's sort of the dashboard. All the other pages that follow on the special ed budget are sort of the detail. So you'll see an expenditure budget for special education. That's where you're getting your approximate 3%. And you look at the revenue page, you can see the variations in some of the other issues. So surplus to reduced assessments, you can see we had a $235,000 deficit there.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see that. Where, where is that again?
I'm on page 50, right in the middle of the page. In the revenue section.
Yep.
You'll see surplus to reduced assessments. And we have a 235, 266, 235,000, 266 dollar deficit in special education. It's an example of a revenue that's been lost that has to be made up through local assessments in order to pay for the budget.
Yeah. I, I think, I, I'm still not understanding why Manchester's percentage of the total assessment is higher this year than last year. That's, that's, I mean, net of, they're all, you net the grants before you do the assessments, right? Before you calculate how much each district has to pay.
Right.
So why do we have to pay net, net, net?
Yeah, so there's, those variables I referred to that cause the assessments to go up. And also in, in that, that bullet, one of the other variables that happens every year is there's a percent, once we determine what the cost is going to be, the percentage of students in each district can vary in any given year. So when we divide up the assessment, the total cost to be assessed, there's also in any given year a variation among the districts as to what percent of the students from Manchester are, do the overall cost of the budget. So that, that number itself could swing in any given year. And then the, the big cost this year, what's alluded to as the residential placement costs, last year, when we put together the centralized special education budget, we had three districts in the supervisory union that had these residential placement costs. Last year, when we centralized the budget, my recommendation was that we did not centralize those costs. We left those in those three districts. Those were costs no one else had. And those costs were incurred by those districts prior to their moving to the BRSU in July 1, 2013. In this budget cycle, we decided to put all that money into the central aspects. So that also is part of the rationale or why those costs are being assessed in a different manner.
Okay. I appreciate the explanation. It still doesn't work for me, but I, I don't think I'm going to try and.
It is one of the more, it's one of the more complex aspects of the budget.
Okay. So can I ask this? If this budget is voted down, do we have an opportunity to open up that BRSU assessment? Or is that, are we done with that?
Yeah, the BRSU assessment is fixed by the BRSU board. So it is not something that would be adjusted based on the budget here being voted down.
Okay, well, that's, makes sense for me to stop asking questions about it then, I guess. Maybe next year.
I'll just say as a follow-up, this is one of the issues, you know, with Act 153, which was the, the impetus behind centralizing special education and other services at the supervisory union level. And part of the issue with Act 46, which is designed to increase transparency, increasingly we've centralized costs at the supervisory union level. As you know, the voters do not get a direct vote on the BRSU budget or supervisory union budget. So to a certain extent, we've saved paying taxpayers' money by centralizing things, but we've also taken away from you the ability to vote on that. For an example, this district at one point had its own accounting office. We employed two individuals, and that cost the district approximately 60,000 more on an annual basis than it is now. We're able to centralize that in supervisory union level. So the supervisory union budget goes up. Your budget goes down. But you don't get a vote on the supervisory union budget anymore, like you used to. You used to be able to vote on those accounting costs when they were in your budget. So there's a trade-off that has to be reconciled at some point. We're pretty much at the end of centralizing things. We ran out of things. We pretty much complied with all aspects of the law. Special ed was sort of the last milestone of doing that. But what's happened is now our budget is rather large, particularly when we brought special ed in. And now there's not a way for voters to, to really get a direct say on those things. You have representatives in the BRSU board who do approve those.
Can I just ask one, one question to the chairman? And that is, does he understand and agree with the assessment for special education?
It's an interesting question. Vermont has a, an interesting approach in that the Supreme Court several years ago requires that every student receive an equitable education. What they failed to do was define equitable. So the, it's something that the legislature has not really taken on. Does equitable mean that you spend the same amount per student? The way it's currently interpreted is you spend whatever's necessary to educate each student. And so part of the special education budget is you, we end up with kids that have needs and the state demands that we spend whatever it takes to educate them. There's no cost-benefit analysis sort of done. There's no limit put on, you know, that's too much. We're required to centralize the costs. I understand the budget process and I understand how it's been done. It's frustrating. It's frustrating to have three representatives on a 21, a 21-member board. And, you know, if that's, if that's frustrating now, wait until Act 46, if we consolidate with several other towns and school districts, because it'll be more of the same. So your ability to influence those is diminished. Overall, the way it's presented here, do I support it? Yes. It's, it's a necessary evil that we have, or it's a necessary cost that we have to
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not spoken on this article yet who would like to? If not, I'll call on Mrs. Dupont for her second time.
I would like to direct my question to Brian. I know him well. I know how bright he is. And therefore, I want to ask the question, if, what, what do you think you can do if this budget is turned down? Where do you think the cuts can be made that will stop us from paying the penalty to the state? And are they things that are really not going to be that painful? Are they things that are really out there in the open and should be done? Are they things that are really out there in the open and should be done?
One of the things that we as a board have tried very much to stay away from is micromanaging the school. And so, we have left it to Tom and Dan and the administration and the teachers to figure out how to allocate the resources that we end up giving them. We're very supportive when they come to us and say, if we could have the money for this program, you know, it would have tremendous benefit. We've tried to encourage both those ideas to come and also to be supportive of them. So, if the budget were turned down, we would have to come back with some level of a number that we felt the town would support. And we would turn to the administration and say, okay, if it's $50,000 less, if it's $100,000 less, how will you, what will your approach be? Where will you find that money? And some of, one thing that's been mentioned this evening, John said, you can think independently without being independent. Yes, but you're still subject to all the state requirements. I think one of the challenges, and this is why I say it's not just the money, it's not a money issue, is that we as a school need to think more innovatively and more creatively as far as how we educate our children to be more competitive with Long Trail and Maple Street and some of the other schools around that we do occasionally lose kids to. So, long answer to your question, we would put it back on the administration, and we would challenge them to be creative and think innovatively.
Does that answer your question?
Somewhat.
Okay. You still have the floor.
Do you have a money factor that you knew you had to save? Was it $50,000 or $100,000 or whatever to stay under the giveaway to Montpelier?
As Dan mentioned earlier, I don't think we can avoid the penalty entirely, but I think we can reduce the hit to the town. And I think, and Dan, correct me, for every dollar we would reduce, it would have a savings of about $1.40. Yeah, so, as Dan just mentioned, it would take about $300,000 in additional reductions to miss the penalty altogether. I don't think anybody on the board would be supportive of that. But I think that we could, speaking for myself, I think we could find a common ground.
Jeff Wilson.
Thank you, Michael. I was planning on going home. It's been good discussion, and it really brings back memories of the old town meeting. But I have to say, and I had to get up, because at this stage, I guess I'm just as perplexed as Mrs. Dupont, because I think she asked some very, very salient questions. And when we had the town meeting where all the decisions were made on the floor, you left with a budget, but you knew the consequences of your vote. And what I just heard is somebody suggesting the chair that we should vote this budget down, and he's essentially recommending that we vote this budget down, but has not given us any idea as to what the consequences are. I won't add any editorial comment associated with that, but I think if you're going to step forward and say to the citizens and the taxpayers to vote no, you have to give them some idea where you would cut that budget, what the impacts would be on the learning process, the resources in this school, on the teachers, as Orland Campbell said, on the good of the children. And we haven't heard that. I'd urge you to support the budget. We've already seen in the handout that we're talking about a reduction in the core budget of the pre-K through A. And I think you've done a good job cutting three positions and minimizing the pain and still recognizing, you have to provide a good public education for the kids in this community. So, I'd urge you to pass the budget. I think it's reasonable and responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Second time, Tony.
I'd like to summarize, I guess, where I am as a result of those two hours we've been here. Somebody said it's not necessarily about the money. I agree with that. I would also say it's not necessarily not about the money. By and large, just my own personal opinion, I like to, I like to be optimistic and go forward. I like to see programs added as opposed to being eliminated. But more important than that, I like to see important programs added, and, you know, as time goes on, somewhat irrelevant programs eliminated. And that's up to the professionals, you people, not up to me. My gut instinct tells me in summary, and even before I get to that, I would say, I'd like to see this budget passed today, tonight, tomorrow, in its existing form. But I'm also aware that in this relatively short term, you can't maintain these existing budget levels with declining student populations. The populations have declined for the last maybe three years, I guess, and the taxpayer, in my opinion, cannot be asked to support this level of spending with continuing declines in student populations. The town is putting its shoulder to the wheel in the tune of maybe $16,000 per student, and by somebody's judgment, that may be an okay support. Some people may say it's not fabulous, and some people might say, you know, it's really not all that bad compared to the rest of the world. I think it's important, if, to go to Sylvia's point, that one of the things that's hurting us is the private school situation. And if there are decent levels of students in private schools that would be going here, and they're not, then as a businessperson, I say, you know, what's the competition doing? What are they doing that we're not? And I would want to identify that and see if we could compete with them, because I think some of this is about competing. And educators, in my own opinion, maybe don't think so much about competing because they want to provide a different level of service. But I think the competition's hurting us. And maybe if we had a precise knowledge of what the competition is doing, maybe we could respond to that and get back to a positive growth in student population, which would justify current levels of spending or more spending. I think that this level of spending has potential to be vulnerable, and I don't think that's a good thing. I would rather see it not being vulnerable because the population is steady or increasing, and a shrewd analysis of what is offered can bring to bear fabulous programs that are relevant to today, and I don't want to imply that everything that's being offered today is irrelevant. I don't mean that. But everything is changing so quickly today. We need the flexibility. You got to have the money to have the flexibility. And when you've got a vulnerable situation with a declining population, which may continue to decline in the near term, or one, two, or three more years, then you got to start cutting, and what you start cutting is muscle. You don't want to cut muscle with these young people. They will need all the support and innovative and new programs going forward. Many of these programs that's standing here today, we didn't, don't even know what they're going to be. But you got to have the flexibility. You cannot have a declining student population. It sucks the strength out of what you're trying to do. So, it requires, and again, I probably appear to be very judgmental. I don't want you to think I am, and maybe you're doing everything I'm suggesting, and I don't know. But it requires a shrewd analysis of what the competition is doing and why can't we do it. Now, if they're spending 20 grand a year on students for the cost of educating a student or more, $25,000 a year to educate these kids, their kids, and therefore, they can offer more than we can, well, that's a real serious problem. And maybe they're spending a lot more per student than we are now. And if so, that probably is a problem. But also, maybe they are not, and maybe they have a different approach to things that allows them to do more. And also, I fully understand that there's a whole dilemma in the world we live in today of perceptions versus reality, and you guys got to sort through that. And some of the perceptions may not ever be able to be dealt with, just because some people say, well, it's a private school, therefore, it's better, therefore, I'm sending my kid there. You can't fight that. But there may be some real situations that these other organizations have in place that we could offer and strengthen the program and therefore attract more students, because without that, I think that the budget proposals in the future are going to be considerably more vulnerable than they are now. Thank you.
Someone in the back there hasn't spoken.
Thank you. I'm Katie McNabb. I'm a Manchester resident. I'm a recovering school board member. The definition of insanity is repeating the same action over and over and expecting different results, which is a little bit what we do here every year. I think that Sarah O'Keefe made a great point. We need some critical introspection into how we are delivering education to the children in this town. I don't necessarily think that should be driven by the school board. It needs to be a community action, and it really needs to come from the teachers and the administration who live and breathe this every day. They truly are experts. And I think that if we challenge them to come up with some creative solutions to our problems, that they would absolutely rise to the challenge. I believe somebody asked earlier, why are kids leaving MEMS? And I can tell you that it has gotten a reputation, and I can't say if it's unfair or not, for not being a place where you send smart kids. That it's a good school, but if you have a really smart kid, you look for a different option. Thanks.
Bill Drunzig.
Hopefully, I can close this fairly quickly. Brian, I just want to ask you a question. I think in your piece to the paper, you're saying our current penalty is roughly $140,000 that we would pay from your calculations on the budget that was presented in the town report?
Yeah, and the way I got to that was taking the penalty dollars that are listed in there, per pupil, multiplying them by the 604 pupils, it comes out to $147,000.
Right. Okay, thank you. In the new handout today, the penalty tax drops to 2.5 cents or roughly 4/7ths or 5/8ths, however you want to compute that. So, if we have any faith in these numbers, the penalty should drop under $100,000, okay? Give or take some thousands of dollars. So, it would be a lot less if we have faith in those numbers that were given to us tonight. That's number one. Two, we have difficult decisions to make here. I do not like to send money to Montpelier over the years. I have fought that through various positions of responsibilities over the years, just taking away from the town. That's been happening ever since we've been declared a gold town. On the other hand, I'm tremendously concerned about our alternative, and that's where I started my discussion in the very beginning of the evening. If we defeat the budget and people decide we got to cut the budget, and I think you said a little bit earlier, we have to cut $2 to avoid a dollar penalty, it comes out of the height of this program here. And I think that is a terrible mistake. So, with the reduced penalty that has been presented to us tonight, I think we need to approve this budget. Then, the second thing I think we need to do is everybody in this room, this whole community, has to get at the head of a wagon and make this school the heart of, you know, a very positive piece of this community that it has always been. It's our lifeblood. It's the heart, as Tracy said, of our community. And that charge, I believe, has to be led by the school board. Yes, you leave the decisions to the professionals, but the school board has to lead that charge to make this school the best school that we can make it with the money available.
Mr. Moderator, can I address a few points there?
As soon as the person who's ahead of you gets a chance to speak, you'll be next. Go ahead.
Thank you. Suzanne Moore, Manchester resident. So, at the last school board meeting, I thought the penalty that we were probably going to be paying to Montpelier was in the neighborhood of $500,000 as a town. And tonight, I'm hearing it's more like $125,000, $140,000, still a penalty, perhaps more digestible. What's the difference between the situation at that meeting and today that may, that, how did that difference happen?
You get a freebie, Brian.
I do get a freebie. January 14th, when the budget was passed, the penalty at that time, according to Act 46, was $765 per pupil. And what the legislature, and so, if you multiply that out by the 604 students or equalized pupils, that was about $467,000. Okay. Ballpark figure. What the legislature did was they came back and adjusted the allowable growth rate. Initially, it was, we were allowed to grow our budget by 1.8%. They added another 0.9, so it kicked up to 2.7. And then, they adjusted the penalty down from dollar for dollar above their spending threshold to 40 cents on the dollar. So, that reduced the penalty from when the budget was passed, $765 per pupil, to now the 244.
Okay.
Okay, so, it's gone from 460 down to 147, if you want to use those numbers. To correct a point that was made earlier, for every dollar that we reduce the budget, not only do you save that dollar out of the budget, but you also save 40 cents on the penalty. So, for every cut of a dollar, it's a $1.40 savings to the town.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is this the third time or the second?
I don't remember. I can't keep track, so.
Go ahead.
Whatever. As I listen to everybody, I think many people are interested to preserve what we have here, not only in the budget, but also in the school. And because of the dilemma that we're faced with, I think we must think and be concerned about consolidation, and that being something that's voluntary by some other school system in the area and not is, not enforced, but something that's voluntary. That's how we're going to get the student enrollment up.
Orland Campbell wants the last word.
The last word in this case is, the basic problem we're dealing with here is generated in Montpelier. So, to the degree that you have taken anything away from this, please keep in touch with your representatives and pay attention to this, because a lot of what we're dealing with, a tremendous amount of it, is coming out of the bureaucracy in Montpelier without much consideration for the towns who are being impacted, and that includes us. So, that's just an ad for paying attention to Montpelier.
Thank you. And with that, if there's no other comments on Article 5, we need a motion to adjourn. Sylvia? Seconded by Orland.
Open your feet.
Wait, just a second.
Article 4?
Oh, I'm sorry. Article 4, to transact any other business to come before. Does anyone have anything that hasn't already been discussed?
Where's the bar?
If not, we already have a motion made by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Drunzig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Please remember to vote tomorrow. We ask you to come out three times in Manchester. We ask you to come out three times in Manchester.